Good afternoon. We'll open our Monday, July the 15th, 3 o'clock meeting of the Board of Commissioners. We started on your schedule. And as always, we'll open with our invocation. And today, Commissioner Stoney Russian, if you will.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Join me if you will. Lord, we thank you for bringing us here safely to do the people's business of Union County. We pray that you will be with us and as we make our decisions, make them be wise decisions. In your precious name, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
We've got a young man that's a guest today, and a lot of you may all be aware, Boy Scouts have to do a, have to attend meetings in order to get a merit badge. And Jack, if you would come up. Jack Krueger introduced himself to me just a few minutes ago, and I thought it'd be better to let him have an opportunity to lead us in the pledge. So, Jack, if you would, come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please rise. He's joining me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Jack, before you sit down, what troop were you with?
I'm with 53. We are out of Black cell United Methodist Church.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, young man. Hey, Jack, let me, let me give you something right quick. Just a little token. We appreciate you stepping up. Young man's got a strong handshake, too.
All right.
Each month, we have the privilege of recognizing our employees on their service award accomplishments. And tonight, we'll start with Amanda Olivera with a 911 Communications with five years, Karen Gillard in the Health Department, five years, Brett Fisher, Public Works, with five, Darlin Blythe, Sheriff's Office, five years, Jeffrey Weatherman, Sheriff's Office, five years. And with 10 years, we have Joshua Rushing with the Sheriff's Office, and Theodore Willis with the Sheriff's Office, also 10 years. With 15 years of service, Lee Jensen in our Planning Department, Lee Dillon with Public Works, 15 years, Michael Cunningham with the Sheriff's Office, Garrett Davis with the Sheriff's Office, Anthony Humphrey with the Sheriff's Office, and Jason Rumbly with the Sheriff's Office. All of the above have 15 years of service. With 20 years, we've got Andrew Goodman with the Sheriff's Office, Andrew Mullis with the Sheriff's Office, and Robin Robinson with Social Services, 20 years. And in July, we had several retirements. Linda Broome with the Sheriff's Office with 16 years of service, and Tommy Helms of Building Code Enforcement with 22 years. We do extend our appreciation for the service that they have provided to Union County over time. Next, Brian, I think if you'll introduce our new Public Works Administrator, please, sir.
I certainly will. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, it is my great pleasure to introduce Mr. Hyung Yee. He's our new Public Works Administrator, started in early June, hit the ground running. We've got a lot going on in Public Works, and I think he's, he's well suited for that. Hyung comes to us from the city of Charlotte, where he was the Director of Organizational Innovation, and then prior to that, he was the Assistant City Manager over Stormwater, Water, Sewer Engineering, Solid Waste. And prior to that, he was with Mecklenburg County in their Office of Budget and Management. I think Hyung brings us some strategic planning that we think will be very important to how we move forward with Public Works, and I'm very pleased to have him here. And I think he might, I'm not sure if he has anything to want to say, but Mr. Yee is right there.
Well, I didn't until just now.
I didn't mean.
I guess I'll take the podium. Commissioners, well, thank you for having me as part of this organization, and to the county manager, and the deputy, and all the assistants. I've been here a month, and it is, I'm just pleased at the privilege of being a part of this organization. From what I've seen, the staff are fantastic, from, you know, the manager's office on down to the folks in HR that I've worked with to get on board, to the people out at Public Works who are, you know, working in the rain, putting in pipe, to customer service calls, to billing calls. They're just fantastic people working in Union County government, and I am so pleased that I could be a part of it to help bring planned progress to this community. And I'm excited by the work, and I will say, Mark Watson did undersell the job when he and I talked about it. So, I did mention that to him after about a week or so, but there's a lot to do. They're great people to do it with, and I look forward to working with you and serving your needs, as well as that of the people of this great community. Thank you.
Well, thank you, sir. I gotta say, you are setting the standard for the best dress manager. We talked about this when we had our meeting the other day, and I thought you were gonna dress down, but you didn't.
Well, I heard there was, I heard there was a meeting today, so I put on the tie for the guys.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Next, we have our informal comments. And each speaker must address the board from the lectern, and begin their remarks by giving their name, stating whether they are residents of Union County, indicating the municipality within which they reside, if any, and stating the topic about which they intend to speak. Each speaker will have three minutes to make their remarks. Speaker may not yield his time to any other speaker. Speakers may not discuss matters of which are subject to public hearings, and they must be courteous in their language and presentation. First, we have Tracy Falk.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Tracy Regan Falk. I'm not a resident of Union County, but I'm a business owner in Union County. I'm here to discuss the contract with Child Support Enforcement. I'm an attorney since 2006. I've opened a law firm and been in business in Monroe since 2009 with my law partner, Aaron Hux. We practice exclusively in Union County. We've been contracted to be child support attorneys since 2011, and we've been the primary child support attorney since 2014. My understanding is that there's a vote for approving a contract with a company called Veritas that never contacted us about providing legal representation. They intend to bring in employees, including legal counsel from outside of Union County that nobody here is familiar with. We have letters from three of the four District Court Judges, including Chief District Court Judge Hunt Gwen, Judge William Helms, and Judge Steve Higdon, as well as the Attorney for the Department of Social Services, Daleon Plyler, who recommend us as counsel that we've provided efficient, professional, appropriate legal representation for Union County through the Child Support Enforcement Courts. We've built relationships with everybody from deputies that I see in this courtroom, to clerks in the courthouse, to the judges and other attorneys that we work with in Union County. So, we would ask you to consider the impact that you're having by voting on a company that's going to bring in legal counsel, as well as employees from other counties. The project manager for Child Support Enforcement is a lifelong Union County resident. She's going to be replaced by somebody that they are transferring to Union County. The attorney that they're bringing in is having to move from elsewhere. They have promised to hire people in Union County, and they are not doing so. I've had direct communication with the President of the company, as well as the Vice President, who have made it very clear that they have made their decision without having contacted people in Union County about who they should hire. So, that's why we're asking you to not vote for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Aaron Hicks.
Hux.
I'm sorry.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name's Erin Hux. I am a resident here in Union County. I've lived here for several years, graduated from Sun Valley High School, currently living in New Salem. I don't want to waste too much time reiterating what my law partner has already said, but bottom line on your agenda for today is whether to approve or enter into a contractual agreement with Veritas. I'm asking that you not do that for many of the reasons already stated by my partner, Ms. Regan. The bottom line for me is that it seems like this company is specifically taking Union County residents and Union County employees and replacing them with people either from out of state or from out of county, or both in many cases. Again, Ms. Regan and I have been the attorneys for child support through the company Young Williams since 2011. And as my partner said, the intention for Veritas is to replace the attorneys with an attorney from out of county, I believe from Fayetteville, and to replace the project manager with somebody from out of state. So, we would ask, and I would ask, that you reconsider authorizing or approving the contractual agreement with Veritas at this time.
Thank you. And that completes our informal comments. Next, we'll have our addition, deletions, and/or adoption of the agenda.
Can, can you tell me where that item is on the Veritas?
Number 19.
Number 19.
Page nine.
Well, we've got it.
We've got it.
On the consent, 19 on consent. Can, can we move that to the regular agenda to ask their questions?
Number 19. So, 38A. Okay.
Motion to approve the agenda is amended.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have the consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent is amended.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Tonight, we have no old business. Our next item is number 38, which is Foundation Forward Presentation by Mr. Ron Lewis. And Ron, some people may not know that you used to be a county manager here in Union County.
I did. I was.
And so, welcome back.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be back. I see Jerry sitting on the other, excuse me. I see Commissioner Simpson sitting on the other side of the desk today.
Don't, don't bring up any basketball stories now, okay?
Okay. I shall not do that. But, yes, Mr. Chairman, I spent 38 years in state and local government, and six of the best years of my career were here in Union County, especially the four years that I was John Munn's assistant. John Munn had been a manager here for over 30 years, and it was indeed a pleasure to claim John Munn as my mentor. And I have used wisdom many, many times that I learned from, from John Munn in, in Union County as I progressed through four other counties in North Carolina. But it's a pleasure to be here with you today. Foundation Forward is a 501(c)(3). We stood up the organization in 2012, and we're about access, education, and community. And do we have any military veterans on the board? Commissioner, I was confident that you were, and we probably have some others here. Every member of the military in our great country has taken an oath to protect and defend the Constitution of the United States. We try to bring that experience and that love for the, for those documents out into the counties around the country. Anybody ever been to the National Archives Building? Generally, when I ask that question, about 10% of the people in the room will raise their hand, and this is pretty normal. As a young lieutenant in Quantico, I got to go every week for three months, and somehow or another, I always ended up at the National Archives Building in Washington. As you go into the National Archives Building, you enter these, you walk down a hall, you enter into this rotunda that's absolutely stunningly beautiful. You see the Declaration of Independence on the left, the four pages of the Constitution in the middle, and the Bill of Rights is on the right side. We take that experience and build it in exterior settings that are designed to last between 300 and 500 years. Now, I don't know how we're gonna test that, but the designers say that with the materials that we put into the settings, that there's a strong probability that they will last that long. That's looking down from, in the rotunda, on the documents. Again, the Declaration of Independence is on the left, the four pages of the Constitution in the middle, and the Bill of Rights is on the right side. The other displays are supporting documents and important materials, but not as honored as the ones in the gold casings. You might expect, because of the age, the documents have deteriorated. As, as hard as our country has worked to preserve these great documents, and they've done a marvelous job, simply the age and the materials that were used during that time of our history, they're, they're difficult to read. This is the Declaration of Independence. That's the first page of the Constitution. In the Bill of Rights, the Bill of Rights of all the documents is the most difficult to read, and it's deteriorated more than any of the rest of them. But once you get into the rotunda, no one hurries you, and no one tries to interfere with you looking at the documents that created this great country. The first time I looked at them, I got goosebumps and chills because I'm looking at the founding documents that some incredible men worked together on to create these, and therefore create our great country. A lot of the founding fathers, contrary to popular belief, were relatively young men, some in their twenties. But there was a, the sage of the founding fathers was Benjamin Franklin. Old Ben is my favorite for a number of reasons, and I'll not bore you with all that. But he was truly the sage. Every time the youngsters got stumped and didn't know the answer to the question, they would go to Old Ben, and Old Benjamin always had the answer for them. Benjamin was an author, a musician, a printer, and he did a lot of things. But I, again, like to remember him as being the sage of the founding documents. He was the brains when they got stumped. Thomas Jefferson, the third President of the United States, was a farmer, inventor, a businessman. And don't many people know, he was actually a manufacturer. He made his money at his plantation, and he was also a manufacturer of nails. He actually sold, made, sold nails as a form of income. Third President of the United States. These two men together basically outline the education system that we still use today. They thought that there should be a primary level, a secondary level, and a third level. The third level being the advanced, of course, with the sciences and the professions, and something they call the culture of virtue. Well, regardless of which aisle that you would sit on or be on in Congress, you have to admit that there's not a lot of culture of virtue in Washington in, in this day and time. It's a sad state of affairs, and I'm not gonna get into that. But we would like, as an organization, to build in Union County, a setting that duplicates what you're looking at there on the screen. Now, when we first started this project, you can't take cameras, you can't take measuring tapes, you can't take anything like that into the rotunda where the documents are. So, what we have built is a, is an educated guess based on three steps of a short guy and markings on the clothes of his wife, Vance Patterson. But we're very proud of what we do. It started in the old Burke County courthouse, and yes, I was there. I had just retired. But on the lawn of the courthouse in 2012, Vance Patterson and his wife, Mary Jo, had just returned from the National Archives Building, and they thought, would it be possible for us to take the experience that we had in the National Archives Building and take it across North Carolina to children and future leaders to know about the work of the founding fathers and just how splendid these documents are. So, we set out to do that project. It's a nonprofit educational project, and the scope is to design and build replicas, just like I've shown you in the National Archives Building. The display must be central and open to the community, high visibility, good foot traffic, and access to schoolchildren. We want to build those documents in Union County. Now, let me tell you just a little bit about the construction. When we first started this in 2012, we had no idea what we were getting into, but we've learned a great deal. We dedicated just two weeks ago, setting number 21 in Caldwell County. We go subsurface three and a half feet. We put reinforced concrete, about 19 tons of it into the ground, and then we build from there a, a above-ground setting on top of that. It's the center one that you're looking at there is four by 12, and the side ones are four by four. Those are the, that would be the one on the left and the one on the right, which is the Declaration of Independence and the, and the Bill of Rights. Then, after that is finished, we come and put document trays on that are molded concrete, and we place the documents in those. The documents are 60 pounds apiece. It's quarter-inch edge bronze. Now, we have changed the font so that it is readable. The signatures are identical. We haven't changed the signatures at all. In 2012, we hired several art artists to come up with a logo that we could use. The eagle represents the Declaration of Independence. Bold, strong, defiant. The stars above the eagle represent the articles of the Constitution, and the stars below represent the Bill of Rights. And that will be placed on the front of the setting. Interestingly enough, we put in the back of the center setting, a time capsule. And we would very much like to work with you and your staff in placing appropriate documents within that time capsule, because we would like it to be opened on September the 17th, 2087. There might be one or two in here that'll be here that time, assuming that this is successful, and we build it here. Just remember that Chairman Helms was the last person we gave the combination to.
You're in trouble.
So, if the combination is unavailable on September the 17th, 2087, he's the one we gave the combination. I'm just picking on him. Charters a freedom time capsule to be opened on that day. We also put some recognition plaques on the setting. We like to recognize people that contributed and tell a little bit about that importance, because it really is important. That's what it looks like, folks, when we get finished. That's the first one that we built at the courthouse in Morganton in Burke County. Declaration of Independence is on the left, the four pages of the Constitution are in the middle, and the Bill of Rights is on the right. This one is in Jackson County. It's our first brick setting that we did. That's, I'm partial to that because I worked about three years to make that one happen. That's what it looks like in Burke County. Yancey County. Now, yes, there's a, there's a soft spot in my heart for Union County, Mr. Chairman, but I can, I know firsthand that you have a strong veteran contingency here. I remember that from the early 90s. But the veterans will reach out to what we do because they're, they're very close to that. But this is the dedication in Burke. It was largely turned out by veterans. I have a story here. If I, Mark, am I running out of time?
No.
You're fine.
Mel Cohen had been the mayor of Morganton for over 30 years. Vance Patterson calls me one day and says, "Ron, set up a meeting with Mayor Cohen." And I paused for about 30 seconds. I said, "Let me get this straight. You want me to set up a meeting with Mayor Cohen?" He said, "Yeah." I said, "Well, remember, county managers and mayors don't always get along real good. We have sometimes different opinions on how things should happen." Yeah, you can do, anyway. I set up the meeting, and we had the meeting. Mel Cohen had personally planted that old ugly tree there for the lighting of his annual Christmas tree 30 years before that time. Mel says, "Where, you gentlemen, propose to put this?" And Vance says, "Where that old dead tree is." And the room got very, very quiet. It was hush all over the room, because the staff just knew that Mel Cohen was gonna blow a fuse because that was his tree. But gentlemen and ladies, Mel Cohen was the first one to say, "Well, I guess that old tree's gotta go." Now, this is what it looks like today. Now, when I first showed that picture, you didn't even see those flagpoles, did you? Because the tree was hiding that beautiful area there that we now have the setting in. This was our second one in Murphy, North Carolina. You know, Murphy is the furthest you can go west and still be in North Carolina. There's an old saying, that it's closer from Murphy to Chicago than it is from Murphy to Manio. And having made that trip a couple of times, I, I think that's right. The third one is in Asheville, North Carolina. The fourth one was in, is in Indy, is in Illinois. That's Jacksonville, Illinois. That's the first one we made out of limestone. There were 200 people in the rain today that we dedicated that setting. Dedications are festive events. It's time to sing patriotic songs and have the high school bands play. We have a fun time with that. But let me close today by saying, it's all about education, that young people know what effort the founding fathers went to to create this great country. It's all about access. Remember those 10% of the hands that went up when I asked you, had you seen the original documents in Washington? And it's all about community embracing the concept that the founding fathers loved so dearly. When they pledged their life, they pledged their fortunes, and they pledged their sacred honors to, to create this great country. That's what we envision happening. We want school kids to come there with their schoolteacher and learn. We provide additional supplemental material. We don't try to replace their curriculum by no means, but we do help with, with supplemental We don't try to replace their curriculum by no means, but we do help with supplemental material. I can imagine a teacher having her class somewhere here in Union County, talking about the local heritage and the local history and the state history of this great state, and teaching them about the founding documents of this great country. There are 3,142 counties, boroughs, special districts, and what's that thing in Louisiana they have? Help me. Parishes. I had a senior moment there for a second. I couldn't remember the parishes. Our goal over the next 10 years is to build as many of those as we can. I hope that I'm able to hang with them that long. Someone asked me the other day if I enjoyed what I do, and I enjoy every day. I don't have to please five distinct personalities like I did for 38 years. Please, Commissioner, forgive me for making that remark. But I had 38 wonderful years, but I have a perfect role now. I get to enjoy visiting with Commissioners like yourself and old friends, and I get to talk about how this great country was created. There's not a better job than what I have. It's a learning experience that the local community will embrace if we're able to make this happen. There's a youngster looking at the real documents in Washington, D.C. Can I have a little help with my, where's the IT lady? There she is. I have a brief video that I want to show you. It tells a story better than I did, and then I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Unfortunately, a lot of people don't get to go to Washington, D.C., and see our founding documents.
So many people that I talk to don't know what the charters of freedom are. When we explain, they say, "Oh, yeah, yeah, I've heard about those." It's very important that the students not only know about the history, but why they should have pride in these documents.
Back in 2011, my wife and I were up in Washington, D.C., visiting with some congressmen and some of the organizations up there. We had some free time, so we decided to go over to the National Archives. You walk through these big bronze gates into this rotunda, and there are the founding documents over on the other side of the room. These are known as your charters of freedom. The first time I saw the Declaration of Independence, something our founding fathers had actually pinned, and saw their signatures, Thomas Jefferson, Benjamin Franklin, John Adams, Rutledge, and the others, I just got goosebumps. I remember the thought came to me, what if I could duplicate the experience I had up in Washington, the first time we saw the charters of freedom? What if I could bring that experience back to the citizens of Burke County? Then, on July 2nd, 2014, we dedicated the first charters of freedom monument outside of Washington, D.C.
From an educational standpoint, for our children to actually see it within their home counties, be able to touch it, feel it, and view it, it's a huge deal for veterans, as well as for our children.
Imagine, if you will, 3rd and 4th grade schoolteachers bringing their classes here for annual field trips to learn a little about the documents, a little about our government, our founding fathers, and also about state and local history while they're here.
I think with the educational system, teachers and educators are sometimes limited by the materials and just time. So, to be able to provide teachers with the educational materials that they can use to kind of focus their visits to these sites, that's exciting to me.
When they talk of their charters of freedom in their hometown, remembering that their 4th grade schoolteacher took them down and taught them about the Constitution and the Bill of Rights and the Declaration of Independence, we're in the beginning of what could be a massive re-education of our founding principles.
Our goal as a foundation is to set monuments in as many communities as possible over the next nine years, to provide access to our founding documents in the communities, so that children and people of these communities don't have to go all the way to Washington, D.C., to experience these documents in a proper setting. But they will no longer talk about the Constitution and Bill of Rights in Washington. They'll be talking about their Constitution and their Bill of Rights, the ones they grew up with, right in their home community.
Thank you for your attention. When Commissioner Helms and I first started talking about building the charters of freedom in, what is it, two or three years ago now, that we first started talking about this? We were, we had funds in our hand, we're ready to build. You know, the downside of what we do is that we've been discovered by other states. Our original business plan was to build out all 100 counties in North Carolina. And then we get a call from Illinois, we get a call from Indiana, we get a call from Kentucky, we get a call from South Dakota, we get a call from Nebraska, Utah. Now, we're, our capability is stretched to the max, but we still want to gift to Union County a setting. We're going to need some help. Not, we don't spend county tax dollars. I have asked Vance Patterson at least 10 times, as an old county manager, can I spend the county's money? To this date, not one tax dollar, not local, not state, not federal, tax dollar has gone into creating the charters of freedom. We have some staff on hand that will help us, because we're prepared to gift the documents and the top plates. That's about $6,000. We would, with your help, we'll bring our crew and our staff in here that are experts on how to raise the money. If we can use in-kind services, now, I know for a fact that the Public Works Department has a backhoe and that kind of thing. See, that cuts down tremendously on our cost. And though we don't spend your money, we will accept in-kind services that perhaps you can help us with. That's another $6,000, which leaves us a gap of about $13,000 that we'll need to raise. Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, what I would propose to do, I would ask you to create us a steering committee that we can work with, and we will send our folks in here, and probably within two months' time, we will have secured the $13,000 needed to finish building this. Now, is Stanley County in the same congressional district as Union County? Is it not?
Yes, sir.
Well, there's a strong possibility, if we can stay above the curve with Mecklenburg County with this, if this is a, if this is a new congressional district for us, sometimes I can squeeze total funding. But I'm the treasurer of the organization, so I get to watch all the dollars and how they're spent. But we're trying this year, in 2019, to build the charters of freedom in every congressional district across North Carolina. So, I've got some homework to do. I've got to see if this is the first charters of freedom in what would be a new congressional district for us. If it is, I'll have better capability of raising the funds that are needed to complete this.
Do you have one in Mecklenburg County?
No.
You have one in Union County?
There's none in Union County.
You have one in Anson County?
There's none in Anson County.
Richmond County?
Not in Richmond County.
Scotland County?
Not in Scotland County.
Robinson County?
Not in Robinson.
Cumberland County?
Not in Cumberland.
Bladen County?
Not in Bladen.
The benefits of running for the district.
We'd be the first.
Thank you, Commissioner Rushing. So, this is a new congressional district. But it would, again, it would be very, very helpful if we could have a team of four or five people to work with us. But I will plead the case of Union County as the treasurer of Foundation Forward. Nothing would please me better at this stage of my life than to build the charters of freedom in Union County and let the schoolkids of this great county enjoy learning about the charters of freedom. Now, what questions do you have of me? I've taken more than my time that's been allotted to me, probably.
I'll just, I'll say that I'd like for you and I to have further conversation.
Yes, sir.
And let the board digest what you presented today.
That sounds like a plan.
And then you and I will talk, and then we'll bring it back to the board.
That's all I can ask.
Is that fair enough, gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman, I'd be glad to volunteer to be on a steering committee and try to identify some people maybe that would be involved in that.
We will work with you.
Thank you.
I'm excited. You made me think about something I hadn't thought about in a while. We took an oath, as veterans, to support this Constitution, to defend the Constitution.
Yes, we do.
You know, it doesn't expire.
No, it doesn't expire.
Each one of us, even at our age, still tend to honor that oath, and so I'm proud of it. And I'm going to do a little political thing. On Wednesday morning, South Pea honors veterans by having a coffee at 8:30, 10:00, it's no charge. So, if you're a veteran, we'd love to have you join us. We have up to 100 veterans from WWII that just walked out of the military. And we do have a strong veteran population here in the county that are proud of our county and our country and the service that we were privileged enough to provide. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for allowing me to come visit with you today. We will have a great day when we dedicate the charters of freedom in Union County. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Apologize for my soapbox. I am proud to be a veteran, and we do have some strong veterans here in the county. Next, we have 38A, which is item 19, it was on our consent agenda, and that is the Division of Social Services seeking a vendor to establish and maintain a child support enforcement program in Union County which complies within the provisions of Title IV. Part D of the Social Security Act has amended Title 45 Code of Federal Regulations. Article 9, Chapter 110 of the North Carolina General Statute has amended and to be totally responsible and accountable for the proper operation of such program for all current ongoing backlog cases in Union County. Michelle, will you help me on this, please, ma'am?
I will. Mr. Chairman, I would actually ask Ashley Lance, our Department of Social Services director, to come forward, and she can answer any questions that the board members may have. Just as a brief introduction, this is a contract that the county has had, this current contract with Young Williams since 2010. And we put this out to bid earlier this year. Ashley can give you more specifics around the dates, and had two responsible bidders, Young Williams and Veritas, and a group of staff identified Veritas as the contractor to move forward, and Ashley can give you more details for any information that you would like on.
So, we, well, I worked on the RFP back in February and submitted it through contract routing through our procurement process. It was posted for one month for folks to submit proposals and let us know if they were interested. On April 12th, around the 12th and 13th, we received their proposals from Veritas and from Young Williams. From there, on the 18th, I met with my team, which included Jackie, who is here in the room, and also Earl Ford, who's our Economic Services Program Division Manager. We reviewed the proposals, graded them, decided which ones we thought, you know, had the best weight. We decided after that meeting that we would prefer to have presentations from both parties, because there's a lot of things that you can write down, but I want to be able to talk and interact with the folks who are submitting proposals. So, following that, on April 18th, we met and had presentations given on May 16th from both Young Williams and Veritas. We made a decision, promptly following those presentations, to go with Veritas, and on May 31st, we began our contract negotiations with them. Any other information you would like?
Well, you know, being on the board with you, DHS, we get ranked in the state.
Yes, sir.
How are we doing with child support?
As of May of this year, we were ranked 84th out of 100. It's not very good.
And what does that ranking consist of?
The federal measures, what they look at to tell how we're doing. They look at each county throughout the United States and make those decisions.
Can you give me a little more specifics around what those federal measures are?
Yeah, payments toward arrears, so if folks owe money towards their child support, how much money are we collecting in our county? How much, how many of the clients that we're working with have we established paternity for? There's five or so different measures that they look at. So, what I can tell you, it's okay for me to answer some of the, not necessarily questions from earlier that were given, but to give you some feedback on some of the information that was given. I first want to thank Ms. Hucks and Ms. Regan both for all of the years that they've been working here in Union County. I don't want that to go unsaid. So, it was never anyone's intention for someone to lose that interaction with the community. I don't want them to hear that from me and make that very intentional. What I do want to say is, we went with Veritas because we're ranked 84th out of 100. We know that we can be better than that. Our county, although it is somewhat divided in the amount of money that folks make, depending on where you live in the county, we are a pretty well-off county compared to others in North Carolina, and I think that we can do much better than 84th out of 100. The package that Veritas submitted included an incentive plan, where if they move us up in rank, then they will receive what they've written into the proposal in turn as part of their cost that they charge the county. I can tell you that the attorney that they are going to use, they are actually going to have an attorney on staff, so that attorney will be dedicated for his entire 40 hours a week to the child support enforcement program, unlike the current situation we have with Young Williams, where they have contracted two attorneys in our community, really great attorneys in our community. But I really like the fact that they, that Veritas is going to have an attorney fully dedicated to the child support enforcement program on staff. He actually does live in Union County. He's lived in Waxahachie, his kids go to Cubbertson, and he moved there about a year and a half ago. He has a private practice also in Waxahachie. His name is Mr. Vaughn. More, I have his resume if anybody'd like to see it. He did work in Fayetteville before he came to Waxahachie. They are bringing on their own project manager. They're bringing on someone that has worked for years with Veritas, because they believe that she can help to move us forward and get us out of the 84th out of 100 and move us up in that rank within North Carolina. And I have to, at this point, trust and believe in that, because their proposal and their presentation and everything I've seen and heard so far helps me to believe that. Also, they started working in Buncombe County, which isn't the exact same as Union County, but I mean, it's fairly similar. We can make some assumptions there. And they moved them from 16th in the state to number two in the state. They're currently ranked at number two. They have also offered and done interviews with the current staff that Young Williams has at the Child Support Enforcement Office, so they're not coming in and cleaning house. I want you to know that as well.
Any questions? Commissioner Rushing?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm making an assumption here, but I would say I'm probably one of the only ones on the board that has actually had to participate, not as a payer, but as a child growing up here in Union County with our family, when my parents divorced many years ago. So, very important, people don't understand sometimes the importance of this decision. That's why I asked to pull it off the agenda.
I understand.
And put it on this one, and I definitely think as far as, like you've said, it's nothing against the folks that have been doing it, nothing saying anything about them. It's just that if you've made that decision through a long effort, then I'm supportive of that decision.
Thank you.
Motion to authorize the county manager to approve to enter a contract agreement with Veritas HHS LLC pending legal review.
Okay, we have a motion and any discussion. Okay, we have a motion and any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Next item is appointments of the Town of Wingate's Planning Board and/or Board of Adjustment from ETJ area. Town of Wingate adopted a resolution on April 16th, 2019 requesting that a Union County Board of Commissioners advertise for the following ETJ vacancies. One, a regular planning board ETJ representative. And one, an alternate planning board ETJ representative. And one, alternate Board of Adjustment representative. As county's normal practice for making these appointments to the board committees, vacancies of the Town of Wingate Planning Board and the Board of Adjustments representing the ETJ were advertised. Two applications were received, Myra Tomlin and Thomas Legrand Jr. Though the board must be generally appointed only residents of the ETJ area, it is provided in GS 160A 362 that the number of qualified ETJ residents applications is insufficient. The board may appoint other residents of the county who do not reside within the ETJ to make up the responsible number of members. Though the assistance of the county GS, GIS department's been determined that Ms. Tomlin resides within the Town of Wingate's ETJ, but Mr. Legrand does not reside within the ETJ area. Should the board wish to consider appointment of Mr. Tomlin as a regular member of the Town Planning Board representing the ETJ area, the board should also consider Mr. Legrand's for appointment as an alternate, alternate to the town's planning board or the Board of Adjustment, although he does not reside within the ETJ since there are insufficient applications. Do I have a motion on?
Motion to approve Ms. Tomlin as a member of the, and a motion to approve Mr. Legrand as an alternate.
Any discussion? All in favor? Next, we have appointments to boards and committees. The Agricultural Advisory Committee, Logan Watson's term on the Agricultural Advisory Committee expired on June 2019. His vacancy has been advertised and Mr. Watson has applied for reappointment. No other applications have been received. I make a motion that we approve Mr. Logan Watson for the Agricultural Advisory Board Committee. Any discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Okay. Next, we have the Jury Commission. Gary Salix's term on the Jury Commission expired in June 2019. His vacancy has been advertised and Mr. Salix has applied for reappointment. No other applications have been received. I'll make a motion that Mr. Salix be reappointed to the Jury Commission. Any discussion? All in favor? Next, we have County Manager's comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of items. One, since it's been a few weeks since our last meeting, we've had a number of items to occur that have been recognized through press release, but I feel like they, they should be recognized here this evening. One is the fact that Union County achieved AAA rating on its bonds from Standard and Poor's. And I see Mr. Jeff Yates in the back of the room there. And thank you, Jeff, for all that you've done in helping us to achieve that. And I should say that, that AAA rating has also been confirmed by Moody's and Fitch. So we're AAA across the board. As I've said before, that is a major milestone for Union County. Hope everyone appreciates what it takes to achieve that type of rating and what will, what the, the impact it will have on our ability to borrow in the future and the interest rates that, that we will achieve as a result. So thank you to staff for helping us to, to get that. Number two, more good news. Economic development, our Economic Development Office posted the end of its fiscal year with a, what I would call a record amount of capital investment, $277 million of capital investment in Union County on 11 projects this past year across a broad spectrum of industries. This is the second-largest year on record in Union County for capital investment in, as far as our economy goes. As a result of the impressive growth, our labor market has grown by 3.7% over the past year. Those are some impressive numbers. And by all accounts, this momentum is not slowing down. There are a number of projects that are in the works. I commend the Economic Development Staff for all the work that they've done and, in addition to the Board of Commissioners and the, the Town Board in Monroe who have made all that happen. I also would like to recognize the county, a ranking came out in terms of agribusiness and agricultural products sold. Union County ranks fourth in North Carolina's, among North Carolina's 100 counties for the value of agricultural products sold. So we remain, our economy is strong on several fronts, and thank you to everyone who is participating in that. Thirdly, I would like to recognize one of our, one of our employees. This individual's not with us today, but we recognized him at the end of last week. We have a program called Caught in the Act. And Caught in the Act recognizes employees of the county who have gone above and beyond what their job requires. They've shown special initiative, and that initiative has resulted in, I want to say, great things happening in the workplace. And last week, we honored Paul Trexler. And Paul works in our water reclamation facility out at 12 Mile Creek. And he is instrumentation and control technician. And Paul's been with us for several years. But Paul's the kind of a guy that, he, he likes hands-on work. He, he likes solving problems. And we were recently faced with what we perceive to be a very large and smelly problem is our odor scrubbing equipment at the 12 Mile Creek plant was failing. Staff brought in consultants and manufact, representatives from the manufacturer of that equipment to give an estimate on the repairs that it would take to put that odor scrubbing equipment back into service. And the result was a projected $1 million to fix. Paul got to looking at that problem, and he studied the diagrams. And, and he put in the extra time and effort. And pretty soon, he approached his supervisor with a solution. And he put that solution into practice. And before they knew it, they had the odor scrubbing equipment back up and operational that wasn't fully repaired. But Paul kept on studying the diagrams and studying the solution and brought a working solution to his supervisor. They purchased the equipment, the, the components they needed to make the fix. And as a result, the odor scrubbing equipment at 12 Mile Creek is back online. It's working like it was designed to work, and $1 million was saved in the process. So congratulations to Paul. We appreciate all that you do. We appreciate your taking upon yourself to go above and beyond to accomplish something that was a very expensive proposition otherwise. And lastly, I'd like to invite Alan Allridge and Chelseaa Sloggy. If y'all would please come up, y'all are back there in the back. Alan and Chelseaa are the staff of our Soil and Water Conservation District. And a lot of folks may not know exactly what the Soil and Water Conservation District does, but Union County has the privilege of being a part of the original Soil Conservation District in the nation. First one was here in, in Union and Anson County, am I correct?
You're correct.
All right. So it all started here. And it all started to help farmers, you know, keep the topsoil in place that they had and keep it from eroding away. So there are, there, that whole program has been in place for a long time in Union County with the main purpose of protecting our water and our soil resources. Chelseaa, while Alan is the director, Chelseaa is our education specialist. And she's been with us for two and a half years, but unfortunately, Chelseaa has been accepted to continue her master, continue her education to get her masters at Duke University. And I say unfortunately because it's very unfortunate for Union County. I have quite an extensive list of the things that Chelseaa has accomplished over the last two and a half years. And it would probably take me 10 minutes to read this list. But I, I'll just suffice it to say that Chelseaa has engaged this community at all levels. She has taken it upon herself to bring this community together, together and provide educational opportunities for homeschool programs. She has engaged the Union County Public Schools in the classroom, and she has developed educational programs that are being used across the United States. She has promoted and she has put together conservation programs that have touched nearly every elementary school student in Union County. And we are sad that you are leaving us. But we have a replacement, right? So Chelseaa has helped us find a replacement, and that's, that's one thing I told her, you cannot leave without finding a replacement. So Alan and Chelseaa have been working diligently and actually have made a job offer to Brianna Walker from Georgia, who will be here on the 19th of August. And Chelseaa's last day is on the 23rd, so they'll have the opportunity to work together for some time. And hopefully, there'll be some continuity because we have a lot of good momentum going with the programs that Chelseaa has put together. And I just want to personally say thank you, thank you for all you've done. You, you came in and acclimated yourself to Union County. You're one of us. And we hate to see you go, but we wish you well in your academic studies and in your future. And we have a little something for you. Patrick Nylund is Assistant County Manager, is over Soil and Water Conservation Programs. And we have a little something for Chelseaa to say thank you for all that you've done. Patrick, if you would please provide that to Chelseaa.
Where do you want us? We're gonna make you a secretary too. [laughter] Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for all you've done again. Alan, thank you for the leadership that you provide in, in the area of soil and water conservation in Union County. I know you've got a, a strong board that you work with, but we appreciate all the cooperation and all the work that you do.
We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And if I could, Manager Watson and Mr. Chairman? I would just like to say thank you to, to the Board of Commissioners, to Soil and Water Conservation District, to the county and everyone in it. This was kind of my first real full-time job and natural resources. You kind of hop around and, and I was so lucky to land here. And I would just like to say thank you all because although I don't have something to, to compare it to, I have to say that this has been an absolutely amazing experience and anyone who gets to work for this county is very, very lucky. It's an amazing community, an extremely supportive group of people. And I wouldn't have been able to end up where I am without the support of everyone who I've crossed paths with. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Simpson?
No comments.
Commissioner Rushing?
No comments.
Commissioner Aigmas?
I do have a comment. I'm gonna take a personal point of privilege. Jack, what rank are you?
I'm life, sir.
Life, very good. I'm gonna share an experience with you, and you'll just have to pardon the length that I'm gonna take here. I'm an Eagle Scout, became one in 1986. Probably nine or 10 years ago, the state of North Carolina came out with a commemorative plate. So if you're an Eagle Scout, you can have one of these plates on your vehicle. So about nine or 10 years ago, I signed up to get one of those. Now let me tell you, being an Eagle Scout has always been very rewarding in my life. Every time I've ever interviewed for a job, I always put it on a resume. It's always come up in conversation. I can honestly say that one job I got simply because I was an Eagle Scout. Back to that license plate. This morning, while traveling through the state of South Carolina, I was exceeding the speed limit. I won't tell you how fast I was going. I'll simply tell you that I caught the attention of a South Carolina State Patrolman, who proceeded to turn his blue lights on and pull me over. He came up and he said, "Sir, do you know why I stopped you?" I said, "Yes, sir, I do." I was going X number of miles an hour. He said, "I appreciate your honesty." He said, "I see your, your license plate. It's an Eagle Scout." He says, "Are you an Eagle Scout?" I said, "Yes, sir." "When'd you become one?" "1986." He said, "I'm also an Eagle Scout. Became one in 2012." Now I'm gonna tell you, that made me feel a little old. But let me tell you what happened. He gave me a break. He said, "You're a good Eagle Scout." He said, "I'm gonna give you a warning." My wife looked at me and shook her head. But let me tell you, always be proud of an Eagle Scout. Make sure you earn that rank. Carry it proudly. Use it to your advantage. Other people are going to expect great things from you. And I know, based on what we saw here today, your public demonstration and your leading of the Pledge of Allegiance, I know that we can expect great things from you. So with that, I thank you for being here. I wish everyone a good day.
Thank you. Thank you, Jack. You did a great job. This week, I had the privilege of attending, Sheriff has a recognition event for his employees to recognize the years of service, promotions, advanced achievements. I had the privilege of attending that, and sitting with me was Michelle Lancaster, Brian Matthews, and Catherine Brown, and Liz Cooper. It's very encouraging, you know, we're talking about first, I think we've got the best Sheriff's Department in the state of North Carolina. And so, working toward improving our position with child support. Unlike Mr. Rushing, I had, I've been married before and I paid child support, and I did it through the courts, never missed a lick. But not all people do that. So we need to, we need to move that up. But have we introduced Ms., Ms. Cooper yet?
I don't believe so.
So why don't you stand up? We have a new employee. And if I'm out of line, manager, tell me. Liz, come on up and, and talk to us a minute. We're very fortunate to have her with us in our Communications Department. And she's practicing on the other side of the camera because you were a TV reporter. And she's gonna bring a wealth of knowledge to help us. One thing we don't do in Union County very well is we don't communicate our achievements out to the public. And we're looking forward to you helping us get that, you and Catherine, to get that message out to our people more so.
Well, thank you so much for having me on board.
Thank you so much for having me onboard. I'm super excited to be here. As you mentioned, I have experience on the other side as a journalist for 11 years and been in the Charlotte area for four and a half. So, I have worked directly and dwell with many people in Union County over those years and super excited for this new opportunity. We are already implementing some great new practices in the Public Communications Office. You'll start to see those rolling out one at a time, but we've got a lot of exciting things happening, especially storytelling, which I know Mr. Watson is very excited about. So, you'll start to see some of those. We're going to do a lot, at least a couple a week. So, we're very intent and excited to show some of the awesome things, people, places, events, programs, services here in Union County. And I'm very blessed to be able to be here, so I thank each of you for having me.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Also, I want to commend all of our staff and our manager. We came, we just come through one of the smoothest budget processes that I've experienced in seven years. And so, it took a lot of work. There was a lot of communication among staff, and we appreciate that, resulting in no tax increase. So, that's always, because I know the manager got creative and is funding to absorb some of the extra things, because we did this no tax increase with increasing our services to the citizens. So, Mr. Watson? And all of our staff, thank you very much. Y'all did an outstanding job. And with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Hi. Thank you.